I just know we're supposed to be two of us so we can expand the programs.
Yeah, if you need to leave or whatever.
Oh, how much? It's seventy-five hundred.
All right, thanks, everybody. We're live. Welcome to the meeting tonight. I'm Thomas Acevis, the chairman. And first off, on the agenda, we're gonna wait for everybody to get settled in. And it's an exciting meeting tonight. We've got Sonoma Clean Power here. First off, the roll call. Wow, those are hot mics. Those are good. Tom, I am Thomas Acevis. I am right here. Tim Kiara.
Here.
Linda Alexander.
Here.
Now Lisa Benavides is away. David Eby.
Here.
Catherine Parakima.
Here.
And Claudine.
Present.
Awesome. Thank you so much. If you can all stand and do the pleasure allegiance. David, you want to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. For the minutes, we do not have them currently because we had a technical issue, so we're gonna table those till in the next meeting to approve. We're gonna open this up next to public input. If you, up to three minutes per citizen, to provide input on any item not on the agenda but within the council's jurisdiction. As Worth's chair, I can extend the time to accommodate item. If not appearing on the agenda, please ask me if you'd like to do that. These items can be further discussed on a further agenda if the Worth Council decides to add it. So if you'd like to step up to the podium, state your name and offer your public comment. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Worth. This is Margot Cambara. In District Three, there is a concern for rent stabilization protection for seniors and those with disabilities. To augment District Three Supervisor Crandall's work on rent stabilization ordinance and ad hoc committee on rent stabilization protections for seniors and those with disabilities, Worth may wish to form a committee on Lake County's housing plan called Housing Action Implementation Plan, or HAPE. The plan sets a priority for housing for seniors and acknowledges that a large segment of the senior population live in mobile homes. On the subject of town hall committees, earlier this month, Earth Eastern Region Town Hall formed a land use committee. This committee will review projects within the town hall boundaries such as those requiring a major or minor use permit. For Worth, one project that could have been reviewed by a land use committee is the ag forest power generation and wood processing facility, also known as a biomass project.
Biochar.
Oh, sorry, biochar project. A land use committee can help a town hall get a better understanding of proposed projects within a town hall's boundaries. Lake County Community Development is encouraging property owners to bundle their requests for rezoning and other land use changes while the county updates the general plan and local area plans. A land use committee can be helpful channel of information on proposed projects and land use changes for the community. Similarly, a Worth committee examining the county's housing plan and how it relates to the needs of area residents can help Worth residents fulfill their housing priorities. If either or both of these town hall committee suggestions appeal to you, I suggest that this be discussed at a future Worth meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Wes Baker. I live in Lower Lake. And I'm here to talk about, give an update on biochar that we had, I was here months back when it was first being kind of introduced and protested a little bit by the community. And I think a lot of you are familiar with Barbara. Barbara asked me if I would help her, and I said I would. So I started doing research, and we gathered up all the litigation that went on on the previous biochar out in Red Hills. And I'm telling you, it was a stark this thing. And I can honestly probably stand here in front of all of you and attest that I'm probably the only one that ever read all that stuff. And I did. And what we found in it, and it is a smoking gun in the deal. And it's not, you know, the community can protest over dust and over traffic, you know, the noise. And all that stuff is legitimate. But it doesn't always work in that case. And it is tough to do once a major use permit has already been granted. But in this case, what I discovered was that there's a contract from the Department of Water. So this is a, here's a nitty-gritty of it all, you guys. There's a contract from the Department of Water Resources State Account, DWR, and that's the big dog in the cleanup of the lake. And the cleanup of the lake, as you know, is right out here. It's right here in your backyard. What gets cleaned up here goes into the lake down there. And it's bad because of the levee system that was built over a hundred years ago. They started purchasing land, and y'all know about the land they were buying, okay? Well, in the contract, it stated that any land that they purchased had to be listed as an open space once it was purchased, regardless of what the zoning was before. It had to be rezoned to an open space. And open space means public land that's never gonna be used again. All right?
For any, for any purpose.
For any purpose. Short of the public purpose, you know, natural, like farm, public type stuff, preservation. The other thing is it had a conservation easement that was supposed to be recorded on the deed at the closing escrow. The conservation easement was never put in books. And in legal terms, and I'm not here to tell you legal stuff, I'm not a lawyer, but in legal terms, that is a breach of contract. It's a material breach because it's already happened, and it's big. It's not an anticipatory one. It's a material. It already happened. It's a big, major breach, okay? Had that breach not happened... Like Arnold was just saying, with, with community development, when the application, the original application was put forth to the community development, they looked at it and they said, oh, yeah, it qualifies, ag land, yeah, you can do this, and blah, 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 blah. If it had been done, like it was supposed to have been done, they would have looked at it and said, this is open space. It's a conservation easement. I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas, you cannot get from there to do this on this thing. So now this is a matter of DWR trying to communicate with the county, and the county communicated with DWR, trying to unravel the mess that happened maybe ten years ago, and putting the conservation in place, and putting everybody a pair of peace that sooner or later, you know, more property gets purchased up, the levees can come down.
Did you want to extend it a little bit more? You wrapped up your three minutes. I just want to see, Wes, if you needed more time just to finish your thoughts.
No, I just want to get across it that we did find, that's a big deal. That's a big, big deal. And if it doesn't, if the county and DWR, for whatever reason, if the county doesn't communicate, and right now, they're not really communicating as well as they probably should, but if they don't communicate with that and put that stuff in place like they're supposed to, then, then the group that was appealing it is prepared to do a, what they call a writ of mandate, which is a legal procedure to, where a judge makes a court order that they do, and then they have to do it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Wes, for updating us and giving it.
Wes, I have a question. Wes?
Yes.
Do you happen to know, at that time, ten to eleven years ago, upon which of the parties was the responsibility incumbent?
It was a, I might mess it up, but it was the Department of Water Resources or something like that of Lake County.
So it was a county responsibility?
Yes. And it was a former, there was a former head of it, who?
Scott Daly.
Yeah, ten years ago.
Yeah, it was. Scott Daly.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that was the name that I remember. A lot of names go by me all the time. But it was a former head of it that was in a lot of things, and then he left a few years back. So you guys, he's not there.
So is this not something that a title search should have revealed?
Pardon me?
When you do a title search?
Yeah.
Isn't this the kind of thing that is supposed to pop up?
If you do a title search on that property right now, it shows it as ag, and that's why the major use permit was granted. It does not show it as open space. It was never, it was never converted to open space. It never was, was put on as a conservation.
When you say, when you say it was never converted to open space?
Yeah, it's supposed to be changed, the zoning.
So, but that's just the label of it.
Yeah, you're not gonna build an industrial anything on an open space.
Yes, but...
You would never, they would never even accept an application for a major use permit.
So who makes, who makes the decision to change the, the name from ag to open space?
The authorities, back then, signed the contract with DWR. When they accepted the money and they got the land, the money was millions of dollars. It was close to twenty-something.
But I would assume that DWR would have a handle. I would assume that DWR would know that you have to change that designation.
They should have been enforcing it. Yeah, they weren't doing their job overseeing it either. Yeah, I mean, it wasn't, I'm not blaming it all on the county.
Yep.
It's a two-way street there. But what got happened is that people were blaming the community development, and saying, no, you know, all this kind of stuff. And I'm not sticking up for them. I'm not sticking up for anybody, really. I'm just sticking up for what, what, what I read, what wasn't right.
Okay.
The community development, their job is to, if you came to them and they wanted a major use permit, their job is to tell you about the application process, and if the land qualifies, to take your application and send you onto the...
Thank you, Wes. We gotta move on to the next. Thank you for your time. Who else has a public comment they'd like to make?
Hi, Julia Carrera, candidate for third district supervisor. Just to follow up on Wes, Department of Water Resources at the county did not follow up on the grant requirements, and that's how that happened. It would not show up on a title search because it's a grant requirement. I'm up here to talk about the coastal cleanup this Saturday. I typically clean up Mendenhall and Elk Mountain Road on a monthly basis. I adopted that road. This Saturday, I am encouraging everyone to meet, I have a Veteel Environmental EPA office here, the old doctor's office, at nine. We're cleaning up Upper Lake between nine and one on Saturday called Coastal Cleanup. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, that happened.
And I encourage the ladies up front who are from the mobile home park to come up and talk and follow up on, Margot's comments. Thank you.
Good evening, Tammy Alexey, resident of Upper Lake. And I brought tomatoes. They're from the community garden on Second Street. And if you are ever interested in picking, it's all done, all the hard work's done. I've killed all the squash bugs, so let me know, and we can arrange something.
Thank you.
Hello, Worth. Margot Cambara. This'll be quick. Last week, Cobb and Middletown marked the 10th anniversary of the valley fire. One positive outcome of the valley fires devastation is an elevated, I'm sorry, an elevation of disaster preparedness and community unity. Lake Area Planning Council's Wildfire Evacuation Analysis and Preparedness Memo states, quote, "The valley fire highlighted the need for comprehensive wildfire preparedness and resilience measures and underscored the need to evacuate immediately," end quote.
We need to, I'm sorry, guys.
Building on Lake County's wildfire preparedness, Lake Area Planning Council welcomes public comment on its draft wildfire evacuation and preparedness plan. The plan sets standard evacuation protocols and procedures for relevant agencies. It will be used to analyze risk assessments for, of existing transportation facilities to determine potential strategies or improvements needed for vulnerable areas and populations. Using the radio alphabet, the website for lakealphapapacharlie.org, on the Lake Area Planning Council's landing page, click on the icon to get to the draft plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to add, my input today is following up what Julie is doing for Sonoma, or for Coastal Cleanup. I'm doing, I've, for the last seven, eight years, a group of us, a lot of us here at the table, have been cleaning the Nice Cut Off, which is the two-mile stretch of roadway that most people travel on. It's quite a bit. We'll be there at 7:00 AM. I'll have bags, grabbers. If you're interested, we do it early because of traffic flow, and it's beautiful there in the morning, cooler temperatures. And if you're interested in helping us out, we'll meet at the parking lot, at the slough, 7:00 AM this Saturday. And it's gonna be a lot of fun. Yeah.
Lots of fun.
Lots of, and you get to see all the wildlife. It's just really cool. They're all waking up for breakfast and all eating, eating each other. No, but it's fun, fun, fun stuff. Yeah. So let's do three minutes each, because we need to get to the Sonoma Clean Power. If you don't mind holding to three minutes, if you'd like to talk about, comment about the park, okay? We can move the park information to next agenda item to give you a full, for next month.
Hi, my name's Shanae Tebow. I moved back into Upper Lake about a year ago after my father passed, and I inherited his mobile home over here at Meadowbrook Apartment Complex. I've only been here a year and two months, not even two months yet. And they have now raised our rent three times in the last year. They raised it the 10% in March of this year. And I had contacted the owners of Harmony Communities about it, and they said, we will only ever raise your rent in March, March 1st of every year, 10%. We all got a letter, these are all my neighbors, all got a letter about three weeks ago, saying they are going to raise it again as of 12,120,25, $350 on all of us. They're saying it's for cleaning up the area, but they've owned this place for three to four years now, and they have not done anything to help us. They don't maintain the property. They don't do anything for us. You call. I called them two months ago to get an issue fixed. They do not return. They don't contact you. They don't communicate with you. But they have all these laws about what you can do inside your home. But they don't do their end of the thing, and they just keep raising things. And they try to make it better by saying, oh, we'll give you a credit for the next eighteen months. But they're doing it to my neighbor Ma. She's been there for thirty-some years. And they just keep doing it, and it's $350. And we're now all at the point where we're gonna lose our homes. It's gonna be March, January, February. They give us 90 days notice, but they always do it on a weekend where you can't get a hold of them. And it's just gonna get worse. And we have been having trouble with break-ins and loitering, and they're not helping us. And I just want to know, how come they can keep raising the rent every six months?
Shanae, did you have the assurance that they would only raise it on March 1?
Yes, I have the emails.
Did you receive that in writing?
In emails from the owner.
Do you happen to have that email? You don't have to have it with you, but do you maintain it on your computer?
Yes, I saved it in my emails. I save all their emails.
Okay, good. All right.
And, yeah, they, that's just their excuse. They brush us off. They don't care as long as they get money in their pocket.
Okay. And we are talking about Harmony Communities?
Harmony Communities.
Of Stockton?
Of Stockton.
Okay.
And they own 40-plus properties. They're saying they're hurting for money, and that's their excuse.
Okay. Kate, do you, I'm sorry, I'm gonna be asking, but we should put this on the next agenda. We'll have this on the next agenda item to get it fully fleshed out. And I understand, I've read the letters myself. I usually don't respond to the public comment, but at this point, it's so important, a sense of urgency is needed on this matter. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll do, yeah.
So my name's Juan Navoa. I do have a little bit of advice for the mobile home park. So they do fall under HUD, state RAM program in Sacramento. And if you call them, you can do an official complaint about them raising your rent more than one time a year. It's HUD. They're, fall under them. And they will be fined, or they could lose their license to even have a trailer park. It's HUD, H-U-D, that they fall under HUD state license for mobile home parks, and they are in charge of them.
Thank you, Juan.
Oh, thank you. All right, I'm gonna close public comment, so we can get to our main event, Sonoma Clean Power. We have Jeff. If you'd like to come up, introduce yourself. There's a microphone at the podium. You can, you can take it off, yeah. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. And, and I want to thank also Supervisor E.J. Crandall for inviting me to, to come here and speak today, and all of you for turning out. So my name's Jeff Cypher's, and I run Sonoma Clean Power. And today really is a short version of what we're gonna be doing in a lot of detail on September 30th at the Board of Supervisors. So on that date, and I'll make sure there's a slide that has that date in the evening, the cities of Lakeport and Clear Lake, the two incorporated cities here, and the County Board of Supervisors will be meeting together in a joint session to talk about what I'm gonna be talking about tonight, but in a lot more detail. So I'll just do a plan on speaking for maybe 15, 20 minutes, but then taking as many questions as, as the council is interested in having. And then really invite people to come to that Board of Supervisors meeting at the end of the month as well. So the first thing is what's going on. And I, I see a couple familiar faces, so this'll be a little bit of repetition for two or three of you, but I'll try to add some new material. So the first thing is that your elected county and city officials around Lake County are really asking, should we join Sonoma Clean Power? We serve, we produce the power, the electricity, for Sonoma and Mendocino Counties today. And I'll explain how we're different from PG&E in a later slide. But what we're really about is asking this question about should your elected officials take a vote that gives you a choice about receiving the power that is produced for you from PG&E or from this public option? So a not-for-profit government agency that runs power plants ourselves. So right now, today, PG&E obviously makes the decisions about where your power comes from, and this is about explaining a new option. So I want to start with who we are. So we're, we're a public agency that was organized and started offering service in Sonoma County in 2014. And we were owned by our customers. And what that means is the, the cities today of Sonoma and Mendocino County own and operate our agency. And we have a board of directors of elected officials from around Mendocino and Sonoma Counties that make the key decisions about budgets and rates and about how we operate. And the, one of the key things is, we are a utility, so we cannot use tax dollars. So we're not connected to any city or county's budget process. We have to recover all of our costs for producing power from our rates. And, and that's a good thing, because it means we can never have a liability that flows through to our member cities and counties. So if we fail, the cities and counties don't have that kind of financial liability. The downside is, if, if we fall on hard times and the cities and counties want to help us, they really can't. So, so we have to kind of make it or break it on our own. So one of the key things that I want to touch on a little bit is how we advocate. When we start a program like the one that we have, we're able to trim costs most of the time. So our, our track record is 80, 85% of the time, we've been able to have lower costs than PG&E for power generation. But I'm gonna emphasize now and in a later slide, the amount of savings is pretty small on the bill. And in a typical year, we're saving customers 2% or so of the total bill, so I don't want to brag about that. What I do want to brag about is, when we advocate for lower rates in Sacramento, in, in the Capitol, and, and at the California Public Utilities Commission, we lose about nine battles out of 10, but we've already trimmed bills over $100 million with that one win we had. And so, like, when you win, you can win big. And so we do go to bat for customers. When PG&E wants to do a rate hike, we challenge it. We make them show their math. We make them, like, open their books. We make them defend their rate increase. And once in a while, we do win that. And so that advocacy is something that is, I think, a bigger deal than the cost savings, actually, than the direct cost savings. So if Lake County does join SCP, then you will have this choice of getting your power produced by PG&E or getting it produced by us. But here's the key. Nothing else changes. So PG&E still makes all the decisions about when your power goes out. I wish I could solve that, but I can't, because it's their lineman working on the line, so it's their safety. They still manage all the poles and wires. They still send out one bill with our charges and their charges on it. So they're charging for wires and grid. We're charging for power plants. So we put all that together on one bill, and we make sure it's all consolidated, so you only have to pay one bill in, in the future. And they still repair all the lines the same way they have. And so one of the things that is, is remarkable to me is the very first one of these CCAs, so it stands for Community Choice Aggregation, the very first one that ever happened in California was 2010, and it was down in Marin County. And today, there are 25 operating programs, and we produce way more power than PG&E does, like, vastly more power. So our, our collective impact, we're serving over 200 cities. We have over 15 million folks in California that we serve collectively, not just us, but us and our sister agencies all around the state. And we saw an early uptake in the coastal regions, I think because of the desire in more liberal areas to, like, try renewable energy faster. But what we're seeing is the cost savings, the better service, the support for customers is really amplifying the value. And we're seeing this rolling out in the Central Valley, in the, in the foothills, in the mountains. And we're really seeing this taking off. So we, we now are the largest type of electric producer in California, CCS, collectively, much bigger than the investor-owned utilities and, and the municipal power providers as well. So this took off really quickly. So 2010 was the first one. We're now only 15 years later, and we have 25 of these operating. So we do produce power on a large scale. This is a Livermore wind facility that we built. These are really fun. I got to climb one. They're 240 feet tall. And at the top, the wind is going so fast, you have to wear, like, goggles, or else your eyes get blinded. But we also do really small-scale stuff. So this is a small solar facility in Petaluma on a former dairy ranch that was struggling. And they leased land to us to be able to build solar and, and use their land. So it's a pretty big range of types of facilities. And we work a lot with nonprofits and community organizations. One of our flagship programs is to provide a discount on electric vehicles for delivery. So this is a group that delivers meals to sick folks, and they were able to get $22,000 off the price of an electric van. And for those of you who aren't familiar with this, electric vehicles, once you buy them, because that's the problem, they're expensive, but once you buy them, they're way cheaper to maintain, they're way cheaper to fuel, and so you can have long-term cost savings with an electric vehicle. So, so we're trying to help organizations that are doing good work in the community overcome that cost barrier to buy those vehicles. And we do a lot of work in schools. So we do a lot of technical training for kids. This is actually a high school class. We, we provide them with a kit car, and they build an electric vehicle, in this case, and they learn how to construct it. And at the end of the, the year, they have a street legal car they can drive. This is a really popular program for teaching kids about hands-on skills, reading plans, kind of learning how to solder and, and crimp and weld. And, and I really love dropping in on this class. in on this class. So the, the process for considering this is that Lake County, Clear Lake and Lakeport are all going to vote in October. And we have tentative schedules, these are not yet confirmed, but what I'm hearing is Clear Lake is planning on voting October 2nd in their evening council meeting, and Lakeport and the county are planning on voting on October 21st. The county in the morning and Lakeport in the evening on whether or not to join. And, and if they all do vote to join, then there's kind of a long process that, that kicks off. So the first thing is the county would be eligible to appoint a board member to our board and begin participating. And the two cities would be eligible to appoint a shared board member. We would start working in 2026 to do a fair amount of community outreach, more details than what I'm giving you today about kind of how this works. And then there would be a process in early 2027, so apologies for the long delay, but the state of California makes us have this very long delay between a vote and service so that there can be planning that happens. But basically service would begin May of 2027. So this is a ways out. And so the really big community push would start happening early in 2027 and would continue through the fall of that year. So we'd, we'd be out in the community a lot. If Mendocino's an example, so we, we started service in Mendocino in 2017, and using that as an example, we're probably looking at thirty to fifty community events or so in 2027, just to make sure we can be in a lot of places around the county, be at the fair, be at the key events, come to more meetings like this and, and meet with folks on tribal lands and, and in community events all around. So I mentioned that we don't save a ton of money on bills. I wish we could, but almost all of the bill is still on the wires, the substations and the grid. So we had a good year last year, we've been able to have some good savings, this is seven percent savings on the total bill, this is the best we've done. We were able to sustain that through most of this year and that is now shrunk, it's a smaller savings now. And in fact, going into next year, we're looking at being almost exactly the same as PG&E, which we don't love. In order to do seven percent savings, we had to cut fifty million dollars off of bills because almost all the cost is on PG&E's side. So when we say seven percent savings, we mean on the total bill because nobody cares what they're paying for power generation separate from wires. Everyone cares about the bottom line. So when we talk about the bottom line, we're, we're telling you what the, the history of the total bill is. We cannot promise that we will save money. And in fact, you can see, there were two years here where we were more expensive than PG&E. And so full disclosure is even though we work as hard as we can to have savings, the, the durable value is really that we can always fight in Sacramento, always fight at the PUC, and then when we can get savings, we pass them on because they, we have no shareholders, there, we cannot charge for a profit. So if we end up collecting more than we need, it goes back to the customer. So most of the time we can have small savings, but I just want to emphasize that there is no guarantee of that. So we do have a vision for the future and probably won't, won't be a surprise to folks here, geothermal energy is really valuable and it has become much more valuable over the last decade, but we haven't built any more of it in California. And so what happened when California invested so much in renewable energy, like wind and solar in particular, we started using less and less natural gas in our natural gas power plants. But the big problem is we haven't closed any of those plants. They're all fully staffed and we're paying almost as much money now as we did when we were running and burning gas all the time. And the reason is we still need those gas plants around in the winter when it's dark and not a lot of wind, so not a lot of solar, not a lot of wind, all the batteries are empty, and we got seven days or, you know, that kind of time period, all that energy is still coming from those natural gas firepower plants. Which means today in California, in May, when we've got a lot of spring runoff, a good hydro year, it's cool, California's grid is almost a hundred percent renewable at noon. But in January at three, three AM, it's almost a hundred percent natural gas, which means we have two grids and we're paying twice. So we're paying for both grids. And what we started looking at five years ago was we cannot afford to have two separate grids. It, it's just getting way too expensive. So whereas in the past, we all thought geothermal was expensive, what we're realizing is having a renewable source that can run twenty-four hours a day means you can actually stop paying for the natural gas firepower plants completely and just say, we don't need you anymore. So we stood up a program to look at how can we build more geothermal but in new ways? So we know we can't copy what is here today. It would use too much land, it would need too much water, you can't duplicate what Calpine has. So what we've started to do is look at all this new technology that's coming out of Italy, out of Iceland, out of Utah, out of the Department of Energy at the federal government. One of the only things I've seen that Trump and Biden agreed on one hundred percent is geothermal energy. So there is this, this kind of renaissance that's happening in Utah and Nevada right now. And there are now proven projects that are now getting up and running in Utah that are using ninety, ninety-five percent less land than we used to use for geothermal, are using vastly less water and are recirculating the water instead of letting it vent to the atmosphere. And so we're, we're taking notes. We've been out there, we've been studying that technology, we now have some partners who know how to build that kind of work. And so what we're really aiming to do is get rid of paying all those natural gas firepower plants in Southern California mostly and start producing our own power locally with these advanced sources. So this is one of the key areas that we're really focused on. And I know, I, I think the Chair of the Council mentioned there'd be some questions on this one. So I just wanted to, last slide that I've got prepared is just a reminder that September 30th in the evening, I think it's scheduled for 5:00 PM, but check me on that, there is that joint meeting at the Board of Supervisors for the cities to kind of do the deep look at, at what's going on. I mentioned the two voting dates, so Clear Lake and then a double vote on October 30, 21. And mentioned some public meetings through 2026 and then a big ramp up in 2027 for May. And I, I think what I'd love to do is turn it over to the council and, and, and just see, oh, sorry.
I was gonna dig.
I can go back.
Just get him.
Yeah. And happy to also send something out if it's easier by email or something like that, so.
All right. Thank you so much. Before we get to the public comment, and Tim will be going around with a microphone shortly, I'd like the council to, I have a question from Councilmember Lisa who's not here, but it's actually a question that's been asked to you. I've watched several presentations, a lot of them are really, and it's Jeff, and you can learn all sorts of good stuff sometimes from all the other ones on PegTV. Make sure to subscribe to PEGTV run by Mr. Thomas over there on YouTube, great channel, you can see all the meetings. We're gonna, I, I'm gonna go right to it. The geothermal plants that are indicated in your presentations throughout your, the county, how soon, if you're approved by everyone in this county and you guys get the green light, how soon will you be looking at putting geothermal plant technology into our area? And where would you go? And how much, you know, does the county, what does the county reap from that? What do they get? Is it just the extra energy going to the grid or are we gonna get a piece of that action? I think a lot of that's concern, concern for the community, you've heard a lot of, and I, I'll let you answer now, thanks.
Yeah. The concerns that that raises for you and the community are exactly why we started this effort. So the state of California has already issued an order, we heard about DWR with a biomass facility earlier, the state of California's already issued a procurement order for the Department of Water Resources to go out and construct up to two thousand megawatts of new geothermal. We want to steer that. We don't want it to railroad us because it's not just Lake County, in fact, the majority of the Geysers complexes in Sonoma and Mendocino Counties, a majority of the people who live near it are in Lake County. So we totally get that dynamic. But we don't want it to just be any technology anywhere. We want the community to have a voice in that. So we started the geothermal opportunity zone not just as a, a signal of how to like work on our own projects. Should we, should we pause?
Turn that one off.
Oh.
Yeah. There you go.
Cool.
Thank you. Hey.
So the geothermal opportunity zone isn't just really for us to communicate out to the community what the expectations are and the locations and the technologies that we're pursuing. It's also a platform for us to go to Sacramento and advocate that anyone else building in our service area should also, and we don't have a legal mandate to force DWR to do anything, but we absolutely can pester and try to get whoever this governor and the next governor are to align DWR's work with community interests. So like one of the things we're really fighting for is, is respecting the geothermal setback zone in Lake County and making sure that nobody, you know, takes advantage of that or, or, or does it follow it. So, so you asked also how soon things would happen. So we've been at this now for four years and we've learned a ton. So we've built up a technical team, we have a subsurface engineer, we now have a transmission planner, who knows, high voltage power flows and so forth that are needed for connecting new geothermal. We've signed different kinds of cooperation agreements with third parties. What we have learned is California is losing out to three states in particular, Utah, Nevada and Colorado, because they have more efficient permitting systems. And California has a very risky permitting system for even the exploration phase of geothermal that can take many, many, many years just to explore. And then once you explore, you have to go through an environmental review process for the production facility, two separate reviews. And so a lot of what we're trying to do is duplicate what the federal government did under Biden to ensure that you look at the environmental review for both exploration and production as a package. So you, you basically say, you can do exploration as long as it's very limited in nature, very localized and, and very high bar as far as labor standards, environmental standards, so forth. And then you can make a determination about your production facility and do that environmental review. So we're actively pursuing that right now. And we wrote a bill and got that onto the governor's desk this year. And that's a huge part of what could make this, something that could happen in less than seven years instead of that kind of timeframe. But ultimately, we're a public agency, we're governed by the elected officials, so the timing, the pacing, the amount of community input is really up to our board. And so far, they've been really demanding that we have a lot of community public input. We haven't done as much nearly in Lake County because Lake isn't part of our service yet. But we've been out in Sonoma and Mendocino a lot, and in fact, those two counties have already identified preferred regions, preferred technologies, minimum requirements for like disclosing what you're injecting into the ground, you can't just keep that a secret. That kind of information is now catalogued as community standard. So, so it's, I'm sorry, like I don't have like an answer because we don't have a project ready to go. We're still out in the search mode, but what we're learning is it's probably a number of years of more community input and meetings before finalizing anything at this point.
All right, thank you. Anybody else on the council?
I have one specific question. It doesn't have anything to do with geothermal, but the natural gas that gets burned in those power plants, is that California gas?
So California does produce a lot of natural gas, but we are also interconnected to the Texas-Louisiana system, the El Paso pipeline is one of the key connections in Southern California. So it comes from both places.
Okay. Thank you.
Why only one representative on this proposed body?
So, so it's two total, but so one for the county supervisors and one shared seat for the two cities. That's the, the process our board rolled out to Mendocino with. And the, the, the kind of thought process, if, if I can represent the board for a second, which is always dangerous for staff, so I will try to, to be faithful, is when we rolled out to Mendocino, having two seats for Mendocino County on the SCP board was also representative of the amount of customers, power load, revenues and expenses, and that's also true in Lake County. So Lake County, if we were doing this based on numbers of customers, revenues, expenses and so forth, would have one point nine board seats. That means two. So, so I think that's the thought process our board has used, is to try to think about that kind of fairness of representation.
I could be very wrong, but it feels like there is a cultural and social difference between the city of Clear Lake and the city of Lakeport, as well as a population differential. So I don't see them as, it's not that they're not co-equal, but that they're not analogous in perhaps what some of their perspective would be as power users.
I, I accept that. And, and, and I think that's also true in Mendocino, where we have Point Arena that has, I think, a population of six hundred, and you have Port Bragg and Willets that have thousands with different politics as well. So I, I think that's something worth expressing. And I can share your comment with our board as well.
I have a question regarding problematic outages and so forth. You're saying that PG&E will manage all the, the wires and the lines and so forth and uh, yeah, I'm, I'm just curious as to how or how you could convince me that your program would be more equitable, more efficient and, you know, be there when problems occur.
So first thing I'm gonna say is gonna let you down, which is we cannot force PG&E to change how they're turning lights on and off. So, so PG&E has sole control over the safety of the grid, and for that reason, the regulators have given them the only, they're the only ones that can decide when to shut off power for fire safety, for example. So we can't fix that. What we do is we do advocate and we sometimes win. So one of the wins we've had is we won several years ago, a rule at the commission, at the Public Utilities Commission, that says PG&E has to try to notify two, two days in advance before they turn the power off, and they have to make heroic efforts to notify anybody who's medically dependent on power and so forth. So we got that done and that was not the case beforehand. That's not a solution, but it's a Band-Aid that helped a little bit. We also advocated for having battery storage be available in small scale for customers who needed that kind of backup system for medical devices and so forth. We're also working really hard to fix the, the fundamental problem. So we have one win, and I don't want to overstate this because there's, there's a hundred places we needed to win, but one win in the east side of Santa Rosa where we found a four-thousand home neighborhood where PG&E was shutting the power off constantly, as, as much as Calistoga actually. And it was a retirement community where a lot of older people. And we found a little tiny section of the distribution grid that if PG&E had undergrounded it, they would never have to shut off the power. And we took that to PG&E and they were like, well, maybe, so we took it to the regulators and said, this is gonna cost a very small amount of money and you can stop shutting off power to thousands of homes. And they agreed and they got that work done. And so now that neighborhood is keeping the lights on. So we keep looking for those examples of solutions. I don't want to overstate the case that we can always find it because sometimes that's a hard solution, but, but that is our work. That, that's what we're here to do.
Anyone else on our council? Okay, we're gonna go out to the public comment and if you could state, if you can do three minutes, and, thank you, and state your name.
Tom Lasek, I'd like to thank Mr. Seckel for coming here. Tom Lasik. I'd like to thank Mr. Seaver for coming here. And I've heard this presentation several times. I do thank you for your candor.
Could you talk up, Thomas, like another hard time to hear?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Is that better, Thomas? Okay. So Tom Lasik, again, thank you for your candor on this. I was at the board meetings when this was first introduced this year. And I've attended and watched several of the other presentations that you've given. As you, maybe you remember, but I was pretty enthusiastic about having a CCA. I was at that point sort of anything but PG&E type of mindset. My concern is the geozones. And here's why. It's a couple-layered problem. One is, when this was first offered up to the Board of Supervisors back in the spring for a feasibility study to see if Lake County consumers and residents would be invited to join your CCA, the geozones were explicitly told that they would not be part of the discussion for that decision. That was in the spring. And then in June, that changed. And so it hasn't been mentioned here. But my first question is, is it now a prerequisite for Lake County to join Sonoma Clean Power's geozone in order for the consumers to be part of your, be part of the SCP customer base?
Is it okay if I respond? Or should I wait?
No, you respond to him and then you have one more question too, and then, okay.
Sure. Sure. So yes. So our board did, and apologies for the lack of clarity in that first meeting. My recollection is that it wasn't expressly separate, but that I was hoping it would be. Our board did clarify that a lack of alignment on geothermal is so fundamental to our purpose that we should all pause and say, do we really want to get married if we disagree on that? And so that did resonate with me because we have invested a number of full-time staff into geothermal work and millions of dollars. And we're really committed to this. And we'll do this in Sonoma and Mendocino if Lake doesn't join. We're still full out pursuing geothermal. And so I think the concern was if we, if we go forward with a real disagreement about the value of geothermal, we're probably going to get into bigger problems together. Because we'll probably end up having too many disagreements about that to make this be successful. So that was the thinking about that.
Okay. So thank you for that, because it does bring up my follow-on question. In this presentation and the other presentations that I've seen, it has been more of a conversation of what us as consumers might see in our bill, what the rates would look like, what you can and can't do, so on and so forth. It is a consumer-based conversation, not an infrastructure-based conversation. And when we start talking geothermal power, we're talking infrastructure. And my concern is, is why would Lake County, I'm sorry. Oh, is it time for the dance?
[laughter]
Okay. Oh, okay. But we'll take your lead. But my question is, is, it's clear that there's a lot of new technology coming up. And we're being asked to buy into something that I don't even think Sonoma Clean Power knows what it looks like today. There's technology coming online. There's DOE research and stuff like that, but nobody really knows. So why would Lake County want to buy into something when even Sonoma Clean Power isn't quite sure what it is? Why not take it in steps and say, and go back to your board and say, we can't answer Lake County's questions because we don't even know the answer. And that's a fair question. That's a fair response. It's not that we're against it. It says that you can't tell us what we're going to buy into. Why would we go into something that might hook us up for $100 million buyout or, you know, eight, nine-figure buyout when nobody really knows the answer yet? Why not stick to what you agreed to and what Sonoma Clean Power agreed to in front of the board in the spring and have the infrastructure question discussed later when we have more information, more technology, more science, and frankly, better maps? Because right now, the maps that I've seen show the entire western side of the county being up for grabs for geothermal.
Okay. Can you answer that? And then we're going to go to the next person. Thanks.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you. So I think my best answer to that is, the invitation isn't to agree to a location or a technology today. The invitation is really to join a board that will steer those decisions into the future. And I think that distinction is key. Our board has not yet agreed to a place or a technology as a final decision yet either. We have high priority technologies and we have areas of interest that we're looking at, but there's no decisions have been made. And I think the key is, do you want to help steer or not? And I think that's the best way I could frame it.
So we're going to do, we're running, I knew this was going to take a while, and I wanted to make sure everybody gets a comment. And so how many people still want to make, ask a question, raise your hand? Okay.
Ray Frederick.
We're going to run long tonight, if that's okay with you. I prefer not to, but we do have other things on the agenda. And this is overly important. I thank Jeff for answering all the questions and continued. So am I still on?
Yeah.
Okay. So we can do, let's hold it to three or three or less minutes for your question. Am I still on?
Yeah.
Okay. I can't hear mine. I can't hear myself.
We can hear you.
No, please.
Can I, can I get a wedge out here, please?
No.
So if you can hold three minutes or under, one question, please, to keep the time. I don't mind. I want to make sure everybody gets their input. So the first person, if you raise your hand, will go next.
Ray Frederick, Upper Lake.
And then Jeff, if you can make it as concise as possible. Thank you for your timekeeping and your time management.
Ray Frederick, Upper Lake. I've got three real quick questions. First question, I saw on your video up there, you've got windmills. Is that where you're getting your power from right now?
So we have hydropower, biomass, wind, solar, batteries, geothermal, about 9% or 10% natural gas still. And our board just agreed to accept some nuclear power because the state of California forced us to pay for it, whether or not we used it. So they kind of held the gun to our head. And so we did accept, I think it's going to be about 4% or 5% or so of nuclear power.
Second quick one. Right now, PG&E gives us a medical discount. Is that going to still go through PG&E or are you guys going to take care of that?
Still goes through PG&E, no changes.
Third, real quick. You say that you may not lower our bills. Why should we change to you guys instead of staying PG&E?
Well, our history is, is that we do most of the time, and we do all the time when we can. But the real value proposition, I think, is small savings on average, big improvements in customer service. So one quick example, if a customer calls us and says, I got a problem with a high bill, we'll take an hour with them on the phone. We'll get PG&E on the phone with us. We'll figure out a game plan to cut their bill. We'll figure out how to renovate their house in ways that they can afford. And that's our rarity, but we commit to that. So we actually are really committed to delivering better service for customers. That's the kind of thing. So the nonprofit funding, the better customer service, all that. But the truth is, is I don't want to overemphasize the bill savings. It's small.
Hi, Robin Aseves of Nice. My, I'm just going to make a comment. I want to concur with Kate. I feel that the tremendous amount of opportunity with our geothermal resources here should warrant us an additional member to your board of directors. I'm just, you know, when I'm looking at, I looked up your board and I saw the, you know, the count and everything. I just feel that we have a lot to offer here. And, you know, we're, we are a small county, but we are rich in those things. And so I do think it possibly should be, you know, asked or suggested to your board of directors that we be given an additional seat if this does go forward.
Yeah.
Okay, mine's just about the same thing.
Do you know how many people, I'll bet you I can talk loud. How many people on your board of directors?
There's 11 today.
And how many, and maybe we'd only have two?
An additional two, yeah.
And are you doing that, you said you named about four reasons why, maybe five, because we have fewer people than you of other counties? Is that one of the reasons?
Yes. And it models what Mendocino did as well.
How about our resource load?
So, so I think you are an important region for transmission and geothermal, and potentially wind and solar as well. I don't want to overstate that because Sonoma has more geothermal potential. So it's, it might be a challenging argument for me to win with my board, but I will absolutely bring this back. This is a comment. I'm taking notes and I will let the board know.
Because if we had more resources, or at least a substantial amount of resources, we should be able to have another person or a few more people to represent our point of view on things. And we shouldn't be overwhelmed by the other two counties pushing their points of view on us. We should be in charge of our resources and our service.
I hear that. Thank you.
All right, next.
Hi, Jeff. Thanks for coming. Okay. The, one quick question, and then can I do my three minutes? This board of elected officials from all over, is there a compensation package for them in the form of a stipend or whatever, you know, a bonus, a pay?
There's none.
None. Okay. Thank you for clearing that up. Because there was rumors about that. That's good. So what I'm here to talk about is that, as an alternative energy provider, the claim that's being made to us tonight is that this is clean energy. And in fact, you're getting the same energy right now. Once it goes into the grid, it's in the grid. The NUC is in the grid, the solar's in the grid. Everything's in the grid, mixed together. You can't separate it. You can only separate it on paper of who it's being bought from, who's the generator, whether it be Duke or whether it be PG&E itself, and in one of their plants. If I'm making extrasolar at my house, the extrasolar at my house is dumped into that grid, it travels as quick as it can. It's probably going to the house next door. And PG&E is billing them for it. And that's clean energy. That would be the clean energy that these guys on paper are going to show that instead of PG&E buying it from me, that they would buy it from PG&E and then they would resell it or some scheme like that. I don't know the whole scheme. I don't think the nitty-gritty of it's important, but what's important is that you're already getting the same electricity you're going to get later. You're getting it right now. The 100%.
Okay. Did you have a question for Jeff, though?
No, no, I'm going. I'm going for the three minutes.
Okay. Can we do another minute and wrap it up?
Yeah. The, we'll be paying for two CEOs now. We'll be paying for Jeff as a CEO. We'll be paying for PG&E as a CEO, along with their entire staff. The Sonoma Clean Power Authority, they demand that all the cities in Lake County, those two cities and the Lake and the county have to agree. If one of them don't, they don't want nothing to do with it. They pitched this same pitch to the county in 2023, 2223, to a different board of supervisors, to a different bunch of elected officials, and they said no. And now they've got new ones in there, and now they're back, same pitch, no, should mean no. There's definite reasons why we said no then, needs to be looked into. The other question is with PG&E. Once you stop PG&E and these guys get the power, which is the lion's share of the bill, the lion's share of the bill is the energy, not the transmission. And once the transmission goes away, there goes maybe 2/3 or something like that of the profit of PG&E. And when we have a fire up here, is PG&E going to show up as a big army like they have in the past? We lost entire half the town in Lower Lake, and PG&E came here with an army and built that thing back. We were back on our land in less than two weeks with power lines and everything back. Are they going to do that for that little bit of a share?
All right. Let Jeff answer that question, if you don't mind, Wes. Thank you so much. Is the line?
I just started taking some notes. So first, let me go in reverse order. So PG&E has actually delivered excellent, or at least equivalent, service, not always excellent, in every CCA area in their service territory. So I want to give their linemen really high marks. They have always shown up in the same way in our region, the way they did before we formed. And they have proven that this is not an issue for them. One reason for that is, they can't lose any profit because we exist. So state law says our customers have to make PG&E 100% financially whole forever, even though we've captured their generation customers. And so our customers pay this gigantic fee to PG&E to make sure that PG&E can't lose any profit. And that is the reason why we can only be 1% or 2% or 3% or sometimes 7% cheaper when the municipal utilities are 50% cheaper. One other fact check is, the transmission and distribution is a little more than 2/3 of the bill. We're 1/3 of the bill. And you can check that. So you can actually look that up. That's public information. The last point, the first point that was made is, you're already getting this power, kind of. So electrons don't actually move through the grid. They just wiggle. So what you're really paying for is, which power plant are you paying to run? If you pay a coal-fired power plant to run, you get your share of that pollution. If you pay a clean power plant to run, you get your share of that clean power. That's it. That's how all the math works. So energy does not flow through the grid like a product flows on a truck to a home. It actually just vibrates and you get the benefit of that at your home. So that's why we track who pays who. So that's exactly how that works. So if it didn't work that way, then if you move next door to somebody on solar, suddenly you have clean power. And that's not really fair. They pay for the solar, so they get the credit.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Wes. I have to move on, though. We've got a close comment here in a minute, but one is really a-
Well, last, I'd just like to say, we need to have a conversation with PG&E and see what they think about it all, rather than just taking the one side. And because this is a default, if we go into this, this is a default, is that they, they said, Jeff just said it was a choice. That's not a choice when it's a default. A choice to us, as an individual choice, would be, we have PG&E, now we have Sonoma Clean Power. And I'm not saying they can go away. And then you say, I want to opt into that. You know, I opted into a co-op in Eugene because it was a good deal. But not have it pushed on you right at the gate. They stand to make millions.
I understand. Thank you so much for your comments, Wes. I appreciate it. Juliet, I'm sorry, we have one more person in the audience. We got to cut, we got to move on. So are you not, you're okay then? Okay. Juan, do you want to make one comment?
Yeah.
You can stand up if you can make it under three minutes, and then we're going to wrap it up. Close comment.
Okay. My comment is, the prices of PG&E going up more. In the last 10 years, they've gone up more because of Sonoma Clean Power, because PG&E is in the business of selling you power. But you just stated, you create more power than PG&E, so you're selling us the power, so they're losing money, but they're still maintaining every line, fixing every line that you're not responsible for. So they still have that overhead and creating all the new lines. And that's why our rates go up on PG&E when we buy it from them. So you coming in here is going to take another big percentage of their power selling to another community, which means our rates are probably going to go up. But you say you advocate for us all the time. But in the last 10 years, PG&E has still gone up, and it's all because of servicing their lines, going underground, because they're responsible for it, not Sonoma Clean Power. You sell the power to us, use their lines, they still maintain them, but you're not responsible for them. So you're piggybacking off of them, and we have to pay the price.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'm going to, hold on, hold on. I'm going to get to everybody. Thank you for that. Did you want to reply, answer that quickly, or was there any?
Just quickly. So PG&E, since the mid-'90s, has not been allowed to profit from selling energy at all. So they profit from building and maintaining equipment. And they also produce very little energy. They had to sell almost all their power plants in the mid-'90s. That was what, when Gray Davis lost his job and deregulation and the whole Enron disaster, that was when they had to sell off almost all their power plants. So they go out in the market and purchase energy in a very similar way to the way we do. So- So, so they're not, they cannot lose any money as a result of our operation, so they're protected in that way. And I'm happy to share, by the way, PG&E has a website about their opinion about us, and I'm happy to share their website about us, because I think it could actually help a lot with this.
I just, I just wanted to make a quick, I guess, defense of PG&E. They do have medical equipment adjustments, they have a multitude of programs to help those who need to work out their payment problems and issues, and they have a multitude of other programs. So to say that you're doing this, it is something that they have already been doing and implementing for customers.
They will continue doing that for our customers. So, so we share customers, and they will continue doing that same program for them. So that is a service that we all pay for, regardless of whether you're with us or not, and so you still get that benefit. Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate it.
Thank you Jeff. Thank you so much for the presentation, again, September thirtieth. Be there at the meeting, five o'clock at the chambers, and they're going to be doing a longer and more, and you can make comments there. Thank you so much, excellent presentation. Thank you. Kate, did you have a comment on that? I thought you wanted to. Okay. Did you want to make a comment Kate, you didn't get a comment, either you wanted?
It's an open question, in that I understand that the Public Utilities Commission Board are political appointees often enough, but nonetheless, as a California taxpayer, they do work for me, or I'll remind them that they work for me. So I'm not hearing the distinction between Sonoma Clean Power and the organization known as TURN, Toward Utility Rate Normalization. And I realize that TURN may not be in the demographic areas that Sonoma Clean Power has made a presence, but nonetheless, they are similar in lobbying for responsible, community-based responses from the PUC, which I believe we have not experienced to the best benefit over the last five years. But that too is a political choice that we can solve at the ballot box. So I'm not sure I'm hearing, I will be persuaded, maybe, but I'm not hearing what Sonoma Clean Power is doing that I shouldn't already be getting from PUC. PUC.
All right, thank you. We need a microphone on you.
And in fact, the CEO of TURN has a property here in the Springs.
Okay, thanks everyone for your participation in that. The next agenda item is going to be about our Board of Supervisors' presentation. We're going to be presenting at the Board on September twenty-third, Western Region Town Hall participants. We've submitted the presentation with the help of our Lisa, and she's not here, but she can hear me. Thank you so much for that, and all, everybody put together, Julie's team, Tim, and everyone on the Board that's participated in this long, Claudine, long process of presenting our issues, celebrating the accomplishments and continued concerns we have with the community issues. Just like tonight, we had a new challenge come up with this mobile home park, which we'll be looking at. So, that'll be September twenty-third, it'll be at one-thirty or after, depending on where they're at with their time items, at the chambers. Hope you can be there, or watch us later, or be there, or watch us live. And it should be a presentation, I'm not sure how long it'll be, but there'll be public comment. One-thirty or after, I confirmed that with Carolyn Purdy today, and we're locked in. So, good job to everyone. Next item, thank you. They're happy, and they, and she, I talked to them on the phone. Website update, we don't have tonight because Lisa's not here. District Three combo meeting, be honest with you, I don't have an update on that. I'd like to see it happen in the fourth quarter, which will be the latter coming up, and I'll have the next item on that next month. So I want to go to the subcommittees now. We're going to start with a new subcommittee. Robin, did you want to talk about copter? We had a meeting, and you can talk about what you guys discussed, and what actions you're taking, or beginning to take. Thank you.
Hello, everybody, Robin Acevis and Nice. So I'm going to read, we formed a copter committee, and we had our first meeting last Wednesday. But I want to. Thursday, sorry, sorry Tim. And the people in the committee are myself, Robin Acevis, Tim, Kiera is our chairman. Leader, sorry, leader. Kate, Lisa Binavides, and Julia Carrera, and Jennifer Denham. So we are the people that are starting the new copter committee. What the copter is, is we're a group of concerned citizens with the current situations going on in Nice in regards to, primarily, one of the main topics was the home on Hudson that blew up last month. Just the lack of things that weren't, this home had been a problem. One of the residents there had said this had been going on for seven years. There was repeated things that weren't, you know, possible drug things going on. The home wasn't maintained, people causing problems. It just, it went on and on for years, and then it was red-tagged, and there wasn't any follow-through, and basically the house blew up. The good thing is, is that the neighborhood didn't go up with it. So this is like a whole discussion we started and formed this committee. And we, like I said, we had a meeting last Thursday, we talked about a couple subjects. We talked about creating a Nice Citizens Patrol and Neighborhood Watch. We talked about having people go out and do a citizens patrol. Generally, the thing, the conversation we've had is that a lot of things happening in Nice that are, let's just say, you know, questionable, are occurring between eleven and four in the morning, eleven PM to four AM. You know, we, myself, we have had things removed from our vehicles and stolen from our property. My mother was robbed in broad daylight. You know, I've talked to numerous other people that have had the same issue, and we are just, we've had a lot of trouble with getting the Sheriff's Department to respond, or in conversations about the red-tagged properties, the lack of follow-through with the red-tagged properties. So, this is why we formed the subcommittee, we want to, we want to get something done. We ultimately, we really need to form a Neighborhood Watch in Nice, it's really important. And, you know, we've started this, but we really would like more people in the community to join in and help us, we want to, I've looked at the National Neighborhood Watch Association, so we can get signs. If we can, we want to do, we want to get, like I said, we want to get people to go out and do patrols. It's just, it's just, we got to, we got to take our, you know, we got to take a stand, and if we can't get what we need from our local government, then we can sure help and assist them get things done. So I'm going to leave this, we made a statement, and this is what we're going to use. So, this is our mission, to encourage a Nice community that is safe, free of blight and crime, and brings people closer together. Activities such as citizens patrol, coffee chat with the sheriff, sharing crime prevention tips, holding events, and supporting each other is how we build a safe, friendly community for all to enjoy. That is our mission, we hope more of you will join us in this mission.
Robin, how are you publicizing that, making it known to the community?
We've had one meeting, so then, we have another meeting on September twenty-fifth. That is when we will discuss how, we're going to go out into the community and attend some events. We are going to put up a Facebook group for Nice, so people can join the Nice community, you know, Facebook group. Those are the several things we talked about. So it's still, it's still very new, but, like I said, we want to encourage more people to join us. So, that's what we're working on.
We want to encourage community in Nice.
Yes.
I think that it's sort of, we were, you know, a lot of us were talking about what it was like ten years ago, twenty years ago, thirty years ago. And, and we all have some fond memories, and perhaps not such fond memories. And it seems that, at the present, we're sort of farther apart than it seems like we used to be. And we would like to, you know, have, have community events, even like we could, we could have sports days at the, on Hammond, Hammond Road, you know, and have concerts in the park there. So there's a lot of things we can do to sort of, sort of generate, you know, or, or to help people see that they do have a community, whether they know it or not.
Yeah, we talked about that, they talked about the spaghetti feeds that used to happen at the fire station, just all the kids playing in the park next to the Chevron, the park next to Chevron. There was a lot of really great memories shared at this meeting, and that's what we want to get back. We want people to be able to go to the park, enjoy it with their kids, not run into issues. You know, we want to have a nice, safe community, and I think we all deserve that. You know, we, we all work hard, and, you know, we take care of our homes, and, you know, we take care of our families, and it was, and I honestly think, we have such a beautiful area on the North Shore, and I don't, I think, I don't think enough people come over here, because, I mean, I hear a lot of blowback about, you know, what's going on over here, people are aware of it. And I just say, hey, let's take a stand and let's stop it. Let's do it as a community, that's what I feel. And I hope more of you will feel the same way and join us.
Just to follow up on the committee, one thing I hope you guys look at continuously, and it's been spoken by Robin right now, is that the park next to the Chevron on Twenty, it's an embarrassment, I go by there every day on my bicycle, or if it's in my car, it's filled up with, I've seen a drug deal happen in front of me. I don't know how we're going to battle that, there's laws that we don't have in place to pull people. But it's, I've never seen anybody there except the same people. I mean, I won't see any birthday parties, there's nothing, and nobody feels safe there, that's why. I mean, so anyway, we got to look at that, take that park back, because it's just, who wants to stop? And it's just, it's just embarrassing, so.
Take all the parks back.
Yeah, we need to get our parks back. Yeah, it's public domain.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know if anybody's seen the beautiful job that SWIM's been doing with the marina. They've done all that wonderful work down there. I mean, they're a great addition to the community, so, I just, you know, there's a lot of good things happening. And if there are people out there that have problem properties that can't, you know, that by no fault of their own, if they're just lacking in, you know, funds, and they can't clean their properties or do things properly, then maybe we can look, talk to county people about, there are a lot of grant opportunities out there. I've been on two nonprofit boards, and I'm very well aware of them. So there's a lot of opportunities to look at to help this problem.
Or we could all get together and build them a barn.
That's right.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Ray, did you have a comment?
Ray Frederick Upperlake, you were talking about having a Nice citizens patrol. Me and the wife, we used to belong to the Upper Lake. I'm not going to say, it just fell apart. If there's no patrol in Upper Lake. Oh, we don't get no, but anyway, instead of having just a Nice citizens patrol, you might think about having more shore patrol, then you can get each city involved into it, and then each city could have a meeting a quarter to discuss the problems.
We need a microphones on, Robin, we need a, you want to come up there and respond to Ray at the microphone? Thanks.
Right now, our primary focus is on Nice, I don't think you have a bad idea, but we have a lot of problems in Nice, and that's going to, yeah, so that's going to take up a lot of time. So what we could do is, we could start in Nice, and then we could branch out. I agree with you, we should, you know, we should be able to work with other communities. I think our whole focus here, especially with the recent events with the Hudson House and the whole neighborhood there, that neighborhood worked really hard together to try to solve everything that was happening, and it, they, you know, it didn't happen. So that's why we just want to focus on Nice, and then after maybe we get that organized, then we can expand out, that's my idea.
We'd like to think that a skill set we build figuring out what to do in Nice is going to be transferable.
Yeah, I know Nice, because I used to be the garbage man over there, Nice servant, and I know the situation you guys have, because back when I was working before I retired, I used to go down the street, see people sitting in their cars shooting up, and this is at three o'clock in the morning, and there's, first of all, there's no activity by the Sheriff's Department. Have no idea where they're at, I know they're under budget, understaffed, but they know that those are high crime rates, and they should be doing something. I don't know how it could be handled.
I have, I have emailed the community engagement officer for Lake County Sheriff's Office on their webpage, it says they will come to our meetings and talk with us. So hopefully, I will get a response soon. They are also supposed to help us with the Neighborhood Watch. So, but, you know, we're, like I said, we're just going to go forward with this, and we're going to get Nice, we're going to take care of Nice.
Okay, thank you, I'm going to, thank you Robin and everyone involved with that committee. Look forward to the next update. Since we have three other committees, a subcommittee, but however, these three subcommittees will be at the presentation on September twenty-third, one-thirty PM, at the Board of Supervisors. Do you guys still, we're going to hit seven o'clock, do you still want to comment on your subcommittees? Or do you rather hold that till, you, Julia, do you want to? Anybody else wants to? Okay, we'll start in order then, before Julia, we, Dave, did you want to make a quick comment on anything? Or you want to? Okay, so Dave will be at the September twenty-third, one-thirty PM, and he has a great presentation. Not just talking about the concerns, but the celebrations and things that have been done. Okay, Claudine?
Just a quick update. The congestion at the elementary is still ongoing and present. I got caught in the congestion the other day, and what I'm seeing are parents running through cars to get to the other side, it's so dangerous. Anyway, I brought it back up at the school board meeting once again, and it's kind of like, oh, we've just got to get through this, but it's highly dangerous, and I'm hoping that we can get Public Works in on it and look for some solution. And I just urge people to please call and make reports to the CHP. It's two-eight-one-five-two-zero-zero, and just be diligent, it doesn't take long, but we've got to get a handle on these reckless speeding drivers in this town. I'm only speaking of Upper Lake, and it's just, it's so dangerous. One last thing, we did finally get the field back in order at the Upper Lake High School at a cost of seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars. So, people, it, you know, again, it was an act of vandalism behind the wheel, and so.
We caught the person?
Yeah, well, yeah, it's in litigation and so forth, but anyway, we, we had to take a big hit on our reserves to get this field back up and running.
I hope you prosecute this person and his family, if he's underage, certainly. Okay, Julia, thank you.
Hi, Julia Carrera, Chairman slash Lead.
Leader.
On, well, until you guys make that formal change, for the Levy Subcommittee. First, I want to say that our Levy Subcommittee is small but mighty. John and Walt work really hard on this Subcommittee, they're not here. Maybe you could all say a little prayer for them, John fell and broke three ribs, and Walt is having cataract surgery, so they're not here tonight. But Walt is assigned to deal with the gravel extraction portion of things, and his update is that, and we want to thank Water Resources for this, that Coleman has been contracted to remove the gravel and sediment in that section that Water Resources said they were going to remove between the diversion gates and Pitney Lane Bridge. So kudos to Water Resources for doing that. Also, they're starting in the middle of the Levy system, which. Also, they're starting in the middle of the levy system, which in some way could be beneficial, because there's not an on-staff hydrologist to say, hey, you gotta start here because of hydrology, so this way they can go from there either way. Um, so thank you, uh, and I hope that Water Resources will continue gravel extraction. Um, I don't have an update on the grant, because, um, it's been, uh, changing, that's the gravel extraction and vegetation removal between, um, Elk Mountain and the Convergence. Um, but, it's upcoming, we know that, but not until next year. Um, and, uh, I'm, again, wanna thank Water Resources, because not only is this gravel extraction gonna protect the community of Upper Lake, it's also gonna protect the, um, state, um, and potentially federally endangered hitch, and removing this gravel will make better habitat for the hitch. But mind you, this gravel can't be removed as long as there's vegetation in the channel. Thank you.
Julia, where, where is the gravel, uh, traveling to, or what, what's being done with that?
The gravel, once the vegetation is being removed, which we don't know how that's happening yet, will go to Coleman's. Coleman has been contracted to remove the gravel.
And then will he resell that gravel, does the county...
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay, the county doesn't benefit then at all from the money, sir?
Uh, I have not seen the contract, so I can't respond to that. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, Supervisor's not here tonight, he's at a conference, so announcements?
Announcements.
Um, I'd like to make an announcement for Lisa, she mentioned that, uh, her great work on the, on the, uh, hold on one second, the Grange. And their next meeting is October 13th at 6:00 PM, October 13th, ooh, is that Friday? No, I don't know, Friday the 13th? Uh, at...
Isn't it Monday?
Oh, shoot, it was like Halloween. Uh, 6:00 PM, October 13th, if you'd like to join them and help them out, it would be great. Next announcement?
The Clear Lake Gladiators will have a distribution tomorrow morning, beginning at 7:30 through 10 o'clock, at the Nice Community Center, which is immediately adjacent to Baptist Church in Nice, no one is turned away. We will have groceries for 240 households.
Any other announcements before we adjourn? May I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, the dump days went real well, as far as I know. I didn't even be able to participate, but we'll have to get report back, but, uh, I was told it was very, uh, very well done. Um, they got a dumpster down at, ready for the Saturday, so... If you could do it real quickly, 'cause we're gonna...
Get outta here.
From my memory, what was said was that it was a successful turnout, um, that some people came two and three times, and, um, that at least one day has been done in all the sections of the 3rd District.
Yeah. They've been over, all of them have been successful, and that's the reason, uh, one of the things we're looking at, hopefully at District 3...
And as soon as he has the poundage, let the Board of Supervisors know.
District 3 combo meeting, once we, first thing we're gonna look at is doing universal trash collection, 'cause it's needed in this count, in this area, so. Thank you so much, everyone, a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks guys so much, great meeting, thank you, have a great night.